That's the Williamson County School Board meeting for May 18th. It's a live stream Zoom meeting and Jason Golden and I are at the professional development room getting ready to start the meeting. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. First thing we have is record of attendance. So Rebecca, if you'd go ahead and call the roll, please.
Okay. Angela Durham?
Here.
Dan Cash?
Here.
Elliot Mitchell? He was there earlier.
Elliot's having trouble getting off of mute. Elliot's here.
Okay. Brad Fiskus?
Here.
Gary Anderson?
Here.
Jake Albreth?
Here.
Sheila Cleveland?
Here.
Candy Emerson? Okay, I hear her. Rick Wimberly?
Here.
Casey Hall?
Here.
Eric Welch?
Present.
Nancy Garrett?
Here.
Twelve present.
All right, thank you. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please stand at home or whatever, we're going to go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance here. Jason will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of America. With its hand on the nation and our indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Okay, the Williamson County School Board is meeting electronically as it is necessary to protect public health, safety, welfare in light of the coronavirus. Williamson County School Board meeting held pursuant to Executive Order Number 16, signed by Governor Bill Lee and waiver of Williamson County School Board Policy 1.400, school board meetings and work sessions. And I do believe we need to have a vote on that.
Yes, sir.
Golden, so Rebecca, if you'd please call the roll on this one, please.
Do we need a motion?
Uh, do we need to get a motion?
I'll get a motion.
Yes, sir. All right, anyone like to make a motion for this?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Okay, Rebecca?
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
She said yes.
Okay, thank you. Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Board. Next item is items of particular public interest, public comment. Since we don't have a public forum right now to, for people to speak, but just want to remind everybody that we do have email addresses. You're more than welcome to send an email to us. And I know that we typically respond pretty quickly on that. So we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. I can second it?
Second.
Motion to second. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Okay, I see none, so go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson? Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
And Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Board. The next item is approval of the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, second. Ms. Garrett, do you want to make a second on that? Nancy, your mic is not on.
I believe there were a couple of us, but yes, I made one of them.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussions? Ms. Garrett, did you want to speak to that? No, okay. All right, I see no one wants to speak to that one. We go ahead and do the roll call vote then, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
And Nancy Garrett. Nancy?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Twelve yes, zero no. Motion passes.
When the Board approved the consent agenda, it included the April 16th, 2020 special called school board meeting minutes, approved the April 20, 2020, school board meeting minutes, approved the May 4th, 2020 special called school board meeting minutes, the 2020, 2021 PCR revision, and the approval of the E-Plan application for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, 142 school federal projects to include ESEA grants, IDEA Part B, IDEA preschool grants, the Carl Perkins Basic Grant, as well as the fiscal year 2020 IDEA Technology Partnership Grant with Superintendent authorizations, which is an annual agenda item. Also approved the High Performing School District Flexibility Act. Thank you, Board. Ready to move on to communications to the Board. We have the Superintendent's report. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank the Board as well. I think many folks know that we had a pretty long work session on Thursday night where we talked about a number of things, including especially our plan for the reopening of school as we get started this fall. On Friday, as I think Board members know, we sent, actually, yeah, Friday evening, we sent a letter to all our families with a copy of that PowerPoint that we presented to you. And I do want to let our folks know as a reminder that we do have that meeting on our, on our website. We, of course, livestreamed it and recorded it. There's about a 40-minute discussion or so where our Board members asked some really good questions related to our plan for reopening. But because we are here at another meeting, I just want to reemphasize to everyone that number one, our district goal for this fall is to provide students the maximum possible direct teacher instruction within the state and local health department COVID-19 safety guidelines. And what that means is our priority is to be back in school, but at the same time, we recognize that we're going to need to do some planning for some eventualities that just six months ago, many people in this entire world never thought, you know, were possibilities. And so we're working on three main scenarios. Number one, to be at school physically in the building when this fall comes with some, with some health plans that will allow us to do that within the guidelines that may apply at the time. Second, we're planning for the opposite of that. What if we hit this again and we need to be out? And so we're planning as well for instructional programming that, that we are operating on the assumption at this stage, need, need to be within the existing state standards, which means those things that were waived at the state level, we need to plan for those not being waived. That includes attendance, that includes class time, that includes testing, that includes grading. And so we're planning on both of those extreme eventualities. And finally, we're planning on the potential for a hybrid model if we were able to have some instruction in the building, but we have to stagger students' time. And again, our folks have, have been, have, we've shared that with our, with our families, but I felt like it was really important for us to mention that to you as well and refer everyone to that work session or the message that we sent our families for a little bit more detail. And I want to also thank our families for, for sharing their experiences with us over these last two months. You can't imagine, unless you've lived it, the gamut of what, what families have struggled with over these last two months. It's been new for all of us. And the, the, the shared information so many parents and students gave us have helped us as, as we've walked through this process with our families. I spent a lot of time talking to other superintendents. We spent time researching other states trying to, to, to work on the best plan we can possibly have for our families as we go forward. In the last couple of days since our meeting, I do want to mention a couple of themes that, that I've heard that I think are very worthy of some, some, some conversation tonight. Number one, special education is very much on the minds of our parents who have children with IEPs, Individualized Education Plans and 504 plans. Our staff is working hard for planning some additional services during the summer to try to do what we can within the capacity that our teachers have to, to, to do a little bit extra, a little bit over and above this summer than what might typically be done, been, be done because many of our students were not able to get all the services that they had. So our, our special ed staffers, teachers are having conversations with parents and students about what traditionally is called Extended School Year, which is some, some summer program for students with disabilities, plus trying to find ways to fill in those gaps, even though we really can't measure some of those at this time. I think there's, there's some, some value in that. And, and here's, here's another main point I wanted to mention. I want to thank our seniors. Our seniors faced something that they didn't anticipate. Those celebrations that they typically have at the end of the school year, where they share some of their wisdom with some of the underclassmen, where they have those celebrations, really got cut short. And I know nationally that's been acknowledged, but I felt like it was very important for me to, to acknowledge our seniors and thank them for, for their leadership and, and, and the example they've been to those younger grades that, that, that come behind them. They are not going to be forgotten. I'm, I'm hoping that in 20, 30, 40 years, they'll be able to tell stories and smile about the hardships that they endured and, 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 and what they got out of this difficult time. But for now, we're in the painful time. It's, it's been hard for families. And I want to remind everyone that we still have a plan for our graduation ceremonies in July, but we also know that not every student is going to be able to make it to those ceremonies because of commitments they've made. And I, and I, and it's especially important for us to recognize that many of those students who aren't going to be able to make it to those commencement exercises, if we're able to have them in July, are, are students who have joined the military or committed to, to military academies because many of them have a commitment to, to start that national service before those ceremonies. So I want to, I want to especially thank them at this public setting, thank them for their service to our country. We are finishing up a video thank you to our graduates. Many of you on our Board have attended our, our celebration that we, we've done annually for our graduates who have committed to the military, and I'm going to miss that. But we want to make sure that those students have a keepsake for that commitment as well. Finally, the, another theme that I've heard discussed among families is that concern about what will school look like, if, even if we're able to go back? And I'll let you all know that, that, that we're never going to be 100% the same. But I want everyone to know that when we start back with our plan, our number one plan, if the, if the restrictions allow, we're going to do everything we can to make this just as good and even better than what, where we've been in this high performing school district. One thing that I think is neat is our teachers have gotten more tools in their toolbox than they've ever had before. Our Teaching, Learning, and Assessment Department, through the leadership of Dr. Allen, has done innumerable professional developments. And actually, we can enumerate them, they're in thousands, for our teachers as they, as they've worked to become adept at many tools that, that now they'll be able to use from time to time appropriately over the course of time, even if we don't face something like this again. But if we do, they're even more prepared. And, and our staff is, is preparing for schedules. And I talked to you all last week about the, the specific commitments we've made to our families, and I want to point out one for sure, that we're going to make sure that our students have daily instruction from our teachers regardless of what scenario we face in the future. So with that said, Mr. Chair, I'm wrapping up my, my superintendent's, my superintendent's information, my superintendent's report for today. But the final thing I got to tell you is I'm excited about something we've been missing out on the last couple of months. The last two months, we haven't done our student spotlight and our staff spotlight. And I'm excited to tell you that Carol, Carol Birdsong is back to share those spotlights with us. Throughout this time, these, these last few weeks, our students have continued to outperform so many other peers across the state and nationally, and it's time for us to celebrate our students' excellence. Carol?
Thank you, Mr. Golden, and hello, Board members. I am excited, and Tim McNeese is working with me, and he is going to show off the PowerPoint. We're going to start with perfect ACT students. And I have to tell you, we're going to go ahead and honor these five that we were prepared to honor before school dismissed for, for the year, but we will bring them back so that they can probably be honored in front of you all when we are back in session. So first of all, we are going to start with perfect ACT, and this is the perfect ACT composite. And our first honoree is Abby Webb. And Abby is a student at Franklin High School, and I just have to give you some trivia here. Yes, she is the daughter of our own Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Lee Webb. So congratulations to Abby and to Lee. And also from Franklin High School, we have Isaac Mitchell. Isaac also earned a perfect ACT composite. From Independence High School, this is Maya Wallace. And from Ravenwood High School, Emma Meyer. And from Summit High School, Liam Keck. So like I said, we will get those students in so that you can see them in person. Now we are going to move to the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Awards. These are regional awards from states in Tennessee and Alabama and North Carolina, I believe, and these move on to the national level. First of all, from Brentwood High School, four best commercial, Ben McAfee, Robin Neiman, Izzy Wendell, and Sam Ball-Pantesta. Their teacher is Ronnie Adcock. Centennial High School's Dyson Campbell. Y'all, Board members, he won three of these awards. Amazing. He won for Best Editor, and the next one he won for Best Photography, and the third one, Best Public Service Announcement. His teacher is Ashley McKinney. So excited for Dyson. From Franklin High School, we need to celebrate Reed Sellers. Reed won for Best Arts and Entertainment Cultural Affairs. And Franklin High School also had another winner in Best Public Affairs and Community Service, Braxton Lazarus and Walter Johnson. Carrie Thompson is their teacher. Independence High School won, brought home an award for Best Nonfiction, Vivian Ayers and Olivia Khan. Their teacher is Matt Balser. And from Ravenwood, Easton Smith won in the Best Director category. His teacher is Megan Sanchez. Now, we're going to move to athletics. These are two that we didn't get to celebrate again before we dismissed, and these are for T double S double A State Individual Wrestling Championships. This is Skylar Coffey, who won in 3A 285, and then Johnny Macfield Hacker, also from Brentwood, won in the 3A 195 division. Their coach is Damon Smith. And Board members, we are going to celebrate a staff spotlight tonight. This is Joy Patton. She is the Tennessee Performing Arts Center Teacher of the Year, and Joy teaches at Renaissance High School. And then finally, we actually have a school spotlight tonight. Brentwood Middle School was recognized for receiving the National Model Professional Learning Community Award. They are the first in the state of Tennessee to receive this honor. So congratulations to all of our students, staff, and schools.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Chair, the last, final thing I want to mention is that we are working on a plan to reopen our facilities within the COVID-19 restrictions as they exist now, starting June 1st. And principals will be communicating some details with, with, with both athletics and arts and, and with students who will be using the facilities over the course of the summer. And with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Board members, anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Golden and the Superintendent's report? Okay, I see none, so we'll go on to the next item, Board Chairman's report. I just wanted to remind Board members who possibly had their TSBA training canceled because of the virus. I know I had mine canceled and had to reschedule. There is one that they have in June, June 5th in Nashville, or you can do an online session if you contact TSBA, and they will, they will get you set up for that. But remember, every Board member, every year, has to go through one day of, of training. Okay. Next item is unfinished business. We don't have any, so we'll move on to new business. The first item under new business, the 2019, 2020 School Board Budget, and we have a few different ones there. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first one on the agenda is the Education Capital Funds Amendment, which is based on our conversation at the work session, a move within the budget lines for capital funds to finish the final grade, final phase of the Brentwood campus renovations. We recommend approval.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion for this? Anyone like to make the motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Galbreth, and was that a second I heard?
Second.
Okay, and we have a second for Mr. Welch. Thank you. Any comments, discussions, questions? Okay, I see none. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash? Dan? Dan Cash, can you hear me?
He's muted. There he goes.
He's an, he's answering, but you all can't hear him.
Okay. Is he saying yes?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Board. The next item is General Purpose School Fund Resolution, Additional Special Education Expenses. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for end of the year budgeting for, for special education expenses that is not included in the, in the annual budget and Ms. Holman brings to you at the end of every year. It's also a very, a very unpredictable line item, but we recommend approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Golden. Anyone like to make a motion for this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions, discussions? Okay, I see none. Go ahead and do the roll call vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you again. The next item is General Purpose School Fund Resolution, the trustee commission. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an annual requirement that we return a portion of what we receive to the trustee who actually manages the funds for, for counties and, and school systems. And this line item is here because we budget a lower amount, but additional revenue typically comes in, so this is an end of the year adjustment that Ms. Holman is asking for, and we recommend approval.
Okay, we have the director's recommendation, and I'd like to make a motion, please.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Cash, you had your hand up?
I was just going to make the motion. That's okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, I see none. Let's do the roll call vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
I'm muted again. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no. Motion passes.
All right, the next item is General Purpose School Funds Resolution for COVID-19 expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request from Leslie Holman, our Finance Department, to create a line item for our COVID-19 expenses. One of the items that we were, that was emphasized to us when, when this pandemic started was to make sure that we track those direct expenses in a different line item, and so Ms. Holman is asking that we create that line with your approval. We recommend approval.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion for this one?
Move to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Anyone like to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions, discussions? Okay, I see none. Go ahead and record the vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no. Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Our next item is the Central Cafeteria Fund Resolution for cafeteria workers' salaries and benefits. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like many employers, we've received notice that we'll have that opportunity through the CARES Act to, to receive some funds, really for the intent of, to the extent available, keep folks working. We're recommending that we place these funds into our food service, our, our food service budget line. And I wanted to point out that early on, when this pandemic hit, we made sure that we provided food to our families in, 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 with dry goods, canned goods, and produce. And at, at the beginning stages of this, we did not qualify for the reimbursement. So based on that, we recommend. So based on that, we recommend this transfer.
Okay, Ms. Holman, I see your hand is up. Do you want to say something?
Not about this one, about the one, one of them was skipped.
Okay, well, let's do this one, and then I'll come back to you. Anyone like to make a motion on this one for the Central Cafeteria Fund Resolution?
I would like to move that we approve this resolution.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to second it.
I'll second.
And Mr. Cash with a second. Any further comments, questions, discussions?
Mr. Chair, point of order?
Yes, sir.
Could we have Tim put the agenda up on the, whatever we're talking about up on the screen for us?
It would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tim, is that possible?
Yeah.
Okay, should I? Tim, are you gonna be able to do it on this one?
Thank you.
You've got it, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions or discussions on this one?
So, yeah, Gary, I'm sorry. Let me put my hand up.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So Jason, your comment, I think, was that we did not receive funds, we did not qualify for funds at the beginning of the pandemic. But we believe that there is some additional funds that we will qualify for. Did I understand your explanation on that correctly?
Well, at this stage, we're not sure that we will qualify. The original plan was that the restrictions were limited to certain school systems, and we did not qualify. I can't give a definitive answer as to what total funds we might receive. We do know that we got this notice from the state on the CARES Act. Ms. Holman may be able to give you a little bit more information related to that. But as I see here, I'm not sure that we will for sure receive any additional funding. Because I think based upon what I've heard right now, some of those questions haven't fully been answered. But we did receive this notice from the state that we would receive this funding. Ms. Holman, is there anything else you can add to that?
No, we're gonna use the CARES Act money to do this. And we do know we're gonna get the CARES Act money. Isn't it to transfer from other funds? It's because it has to go through the school federal projects first, and then they'll transfer to us, to the cafeteria fund, so we can use it to place ours.
And Mr. Mitchell, I can give you this. We have heard that there is gonna be some administration through these next few months from FEMA. And that's one of the reasons we're tracking our additional expenditures in the hopes that there may be some additional available funds in these next few months.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I see none. Then if we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you, board. Ms. Holman, did you want to say something on one of these agenda items?
Did you take a vote on the property insurance?
Mr. Chair, I don't see that on the agenda that was prepared.
I just added it.
Oh.
We talked about it in the work session. Yeah, I just, I left it off. I just added it, so you'll have to refresh.
Okay. So Mr. Anderson and I had a print hard copy, but the agenda that was presented. Tim, Mr. McNeese, if you would, place the agenda up on the screen so that we can make sure. So if I'm not mistaken, just to make sure, Rebecca, the agenda item that was placed and that was approved by the board included what? If you would, please read that line item for us.
The one you just did?
The one that you referenced with respect to insurance.
Okay, it is, I'm going back and looking.
Mr. Chairman, point of order here. That particular item is still yet to come on our agenda. Rebecca has placed it towards the end. So I see it on our online agenda, but it is below where we are currently at.
Right, I put it at the very end, after the Chromebooks.
Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to the Chromebook, one if everyone's okay with that. The item is General Purpose School Fund Resolution for a lease purchase of Chromebooks. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, when you all approved the budget for July, we included in there an item for lease purchase of Chromebooks. So you all have already approved the funding for this. This is the next step for you all to approve the actual act that we discussed when we went through the budget, so that we can take that to the county commission, and we recommend your approval.
Okay, we have the director's recommendation. And we'd like to make a motion on this lease purchase of the Chromebooks.
I'll do first.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Okay, any further comments, questions, discussions? Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In our work session, we mentioned the fact that we were also looking to purchase some hotspots. Is that included in this, or is that gonna be a separate?
Mr. Mitchell, that's separate. That's actually included in different line items for those, and the brand name of what we're talking about is Kajit. This is for the actual Chromebook devices as part of our plan.
Okay, thank you.
And, let's see, Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Jason, for this $6 million, how many Chromebooks are we getting? And then I just want to, if we can reiterate, how many Chromebooks were going to be, are set to go out of service, but we're gonna keep them so that we can keep our numbers up?
Sure. Go ahead, sorry.
No, no, please.
So number one, that includes purchase of about 18,000 Chromebooks. And what we're doing, especially for the folks who are watching this meeting and haven't seen some of our previous meetings, is we did a pilot at Independence High School in Brentwood Middle. And so we are speeding up the strategic plan, especially for this topic with those 18,000 Chromebooks. And if I may, Mr. McNeese, can you give me an estimate of the number of Chromebooks that were set to retire that we're hanging on to so that they can be supplemented? That's the new purchases, the replacements. Oh, and likewise, likewise, we had, according to Mr. McNeese, about 17,000 that were set to retire, and we're saving those, knowing that not all of them will be useful. But we believe we can get some more life out of them.
So just a follow-up with, if we approve this, and from a timing standpoint, does this go to the commission? Or, and then from an ultimate timing of getting these in the hands of our schools and our students potentially, when would we expect to get these in service?
So the answer to your question about the commission, yes, it does. And I also want to point out that this is a 0% interest lease purchase agreement. And Ms. Holman actually double-checked that because it really sounded too good to be true. But I believe it's likely a product of what so many computer companies are working with right now. So we're in the queue for our contractor Dell. As many of you might guess, there is certainly a lot of demand right now from school districts for this. Many school districts across the country have been through, in the strategic process of developing, you know, what many of us call one-to-one, where students can have their Chromebook. Our contractors have told our technology folks that they should receive those devices in early July. July 10th is the projected date they have. But, you know, so we're planning and hoping for that. And with school starting on August 7th, our technology department has said that it's gonna be tight, but they'll have time to get those ready with our software on them.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else have any questions on this lease purchase? Okay, I see none. And if we go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, next item is the General Purpose School Fund Resolution on property insurance. I see that now on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This final item in the finance portion is related to another end-of-year budget correction with a $70,000 increase based on the claims that happened over the course of the year, and we do recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion for this one?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Anyone second it?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further questions on this one, comments? Okay, Mr. Galbraith, is your hand up from last time, or do you want to speak to this one?
No, it's still up. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. All right, we have our motion and a second. If we go ahead and do the roll call vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is the PECA Memorandum of Understanding for 2019 through 2022. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Many of you recall and know that we have an agreement with our teacher leaders, and that's this PECA Memorandum of Understanding. We're actually getting ready to start year two of a three-year agreement. And each year, our teacher leaders and staff from the central office meet and talk about each item. So we have some proposed changes for the second year of this agreement. I want to point out one specifically, and it is designed to create a little bit more flexibility for what we think of as inclement weather days, stockpiled days, so that we can jump a little quicker in the event we are required to be out for any period of time this coming school year due to inclement weather or any other emergency, such as what we faced this year with COVID-19. Our team was led by Dr. Lee Webb, and so I'm prepared to answer any questions you might ask. And Dr. Webb is too. But I want to emphasize what a great team of teachers we have to work with. The WCA really has children's hearts in their minds and in that service in their minds. And so I want to specifically thank them for their work, especially this year as we present this to you. We recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have two board members who would like to speak before a motion is on the floor for this one. Mr. Wimberly? Mr. Wimberly, you're muted. Now you're not. Now you're good.
I just want to say that I, Rick Wimberly, state that I have a relative employed by the school system and certify that I will vote in the best interest of the school district.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mitchell?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to state that I, Elliot Mitchell, have a relative employed by the school system and certify that I will vote in the best interest of the school district.
Thank you, gentlemen. We are ready for a motion. Anyone like to make a motion for approval of this memorandum of understanding?
I would like to make, go ahead, Candy.
I'm sorry, you can do it. I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Mr. Jim.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Mitchell. And Miss Emerson, you're seconding it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? All right, I don't see any. If we go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you, board members. Our next item is our first reading of board policies. First one is 3.500 Food Service Management. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a reminder, we have two readings on our board policies. This is the first reading for our food service management change. And what we propose here is to institutionalize our practice that if there is a student debt for food service, that we do not communicate that directly with the students in the presence of anyone else. And we make sure that that does not become a public issue. That's the synopsis of it, and we recommend approval.
Okay, I would like to make a motion for 3.500 Food Service Management policy on first reading.
Please, move.
We have a motion from, I believe it was Mr. Cash?
Yes.
And second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, second from Miss Emerson. Miss Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention to the board that this is a change that came out of policy discussions about the policy that was in place. And by his attendance at the policy committee meeting, at the policy committee meeting, my board colleague Elliot Mitchell made this suggestion, and I'm appreciative of that suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other further comments, discussions? And we have the superintendent's recommendation, so let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
And Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no, motion passes.
All right, we're moving on to the next one. It's 5.1082 telework. This is a brand-new policy and is up for first reading. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're correct, of course, that this is a brand-new policy recommended by Becky Hall, our assistant superintendent for human resources. And I just want to point out, Mr. Mitchell made a really good suggestion to us with the previous policy, and both board members and staff make recommendations that drive our work within the policy committee. The telework policy is a recommendation through Ms. Hall and actually the TSBA, the Tennessee School Boards Association, as a measure to make sure that our community knows that telework is a viable possibility. And we recommend approval at first reading.
Thank you, sir. Anyone like to make a motion for this one on telework?
Mr. Chairman, this is Elliot. I would like to make that motion.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion, and I'd like to second it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further comments or discussions? Ms. Garrett, is your hand up for this one, or leftover from the last one? Okay, the hand is now down. So we're ready to go ahead and record the votes. If we do the roll call, please.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no, motion passes.
All right, thank you again, Board. The next policy for first reading is 5.3051, Family First Coronavirus Response Act. This also is a new policy up for first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just like the one I've mentioned, this also comes from the human resources department and a recommendation from TSBA, the Tennessee School Boards Association. I did want to point out one uniqueness in this particular policy. This is designed to put on paper in a way that's readable, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. It's actually scheduled to last through the federal legislation through the end of this calendar year. But the recommendation is that we place this in a location in our board policy so that it can be found easily by folks in our human resources section. So we do recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Anyone like to make a motion for this one on Family First Coronavirus Response Act on this new policy on first reading?
I'll make a motion. Brad?
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Sheila, I'll second.
Sheila, okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All right, I see none. If we go ahead and do a roll call then, please?
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Candy Emerson?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
And Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no, motion passes.
All right, thank you, board members. That ends the board policies on first reading and ends our agenda. Mr. Golden, any last words for the month of May?
Well, I just want to say, Mr. Chair, the summer's getting ready to start for our families, but I want everyone to know that we're gonna continue to work, based on the information we gave you all at the work session and what we've shared with our families. And I hope that everyone has a good, safe summer. And let's keep in our thoughts those, our health leaders who are helping lead us through this time. I'm gratified and pleased that our leaders are taking those steps towards our being able to be back in for this fall. But I also recognize that we're gonna have to rely on our health authorities. So I do encourage folks, as they go out this summer, to honor what our health advisors tell us so that we can increase the likelihood that we can be back in school as this fall starts. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Thank you, board members. Appreciate your service to the community, and we will see you again in the month of June. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.